It's all yours, Susan.
Well, welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you here today and excited to see the presentation that Ken is going to be presenting today and I'm going to let him take it from here. He's also going to, he was sharing with us before the recording started that he is going to re-record the last month's presentation because there had been some technical difficulty and he will post that online as soon as possible. So, Ken?
Correct. Okay. Now, if I can summon my vast technical skills, I'll start sharing the screen. Okay, I'm gonna put myself up in the corner so I'm not in the way here. Bear with me. And I think it's all set to go. I don't see it here. Who's using Chrome? I had them all queued up ready to go and now I don't see it.
So Ken, I think if you go to slideshow, you know, you see over at the top?
About where it says from the beginning.
Or yes.
From beginning, right there above the two yellow lines on the left-hand side of the screen.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
We see it. Yeah.
Let me see what I've got here. Well, I can't find my my files. Oh, here it is. Okay. Here it is. Here it is. Oh, bear with me, Dan. I need your expertise.
I'm not there anymore, Ken.
I know. Something that should have been very simple. Anyway, well, now, now we're, I'm gonna put this up in the corner. And so hopefully you can see most of the slides. So yeah, our talk today is a
Yeah, we don't see anything.
I'm not sharing the screen, of course. Escape. I have to get back to this. Screen. Fingers crossed. Now are you seeing something?
Yes.
Okay. Gee, that wasn't hard at all. Okay. Once again, this is sort of a continuation of last month's topic and that video will be, as Susan said, posted. I'll get to that this week. The two are related, but you can certainly, if you haven't seen that one, this will still make sense. So can I get this panel on the bottom out of the way? Hide floating controls. There we go. Okay. So our topic is finding cousins here and abroad, some tips and techniques for finding living relatives. First of all, let's ask ourselves, why do we want to find living relatives unless they got lots of money? But of course, most of our research very often is going back generation by generation on our direct line. And along the way, we do pick up information on siblings and extended family. But very often, it's a very narrow tree going back in time. So our goal may be simply to expand our tree, just to make it as broad and as complete as we can. And also by researching these collateral lines, they can help us, we know, break through our own brick walls because other branches of the family may have information or knowledge that was lost in our branch of the family. Somewhere along the way, you know, one branch of the family inherited a family Bible that we don't have possession or access to, or maybe didn't even know about. And the information on there could hold the key to answer some of your questions. And also they've got other family mementos and traditions and stories. So that's another reason to research those collateral lines. And also, finally, distant cousins can help us answer DNA questions and not simply just the Y-DNA on the direct lineage, but also finding cousins can help us with autosomal testing and extend our knowledge that way. Well, how do we find them if we don't even know they exist? First of all, of course, we have to identify them. So like anything, you start with what you know. For instance, do you know the country of origin for your immigrant ancestor? And I suppose I should back that up and say, well, lucky you if you actually know your immigrant ancestor. We don't in our line. We're getting close, I think. But certainly if you know your immigrant ancestor, do you know what country they came from? And if you do know the country, do you know what part of the country they came from? For instance, Ireland, England, Scotland, the park's name is certainly not Smith or Jones or O'Sullivan or something like that, but it is not that rare in the British Isles either. And so if you simply start looking in an entire country for your parks ancestors, you're going to find they're all over the place and you have no clue as to where to really bore down and look for relevant records. If you know neither of those things, if you don't know the country, or you don't know what part of the country they came from, how do you begin to find out? Well, I'm going to beg off on that for now and tease you with the fact that I think this is again, another topic that could well deserve its own presentation. Because there's a lot of techniques and ways to begin to find out. And I will drop a hint, and it's probably something you're quite aware of, is that DNA will play a large part of that. Not exclusively, but a large part of it. And in fact, in our genetic group, a couple of cousins who are here today, we don't know our immigrant ancestor, but because of DNA testing, we have found our country of origin and what part of the country of origin that we came from. So we'll leave that there for now and, and, and expand on that in another presentation. So you should ask yourself also what it is you want or what it is you need to know. Are you simply looking for that next generation back to break through that brick wall? Or are you looking to find a location for record search in a particular country? And also you are looking to locate living relatives, both to learn more from them and to participate in a DNA project or in your DNA project for your particular group, either and both Y-DNA and autosomal testing, because both can be very useful. So the topic was the search for living cousins here and abroad. So we'll take a look at the US first because the techniques and the methods are similar, whether you're living cousins here in the US or in Canada or overseas. In the US, although we've certainly done research in earlier censuses, presumably, I would start with the most recent census, 2030, 40, 50. Why 1920? Certainly anybody that's on the 1920 census unless they're well over 100 years old is no longer living. But by looking particularly at the young adults and the children in the 1920 census, that will give you information that can help you identify them in the later censuses. So you know you've got the right person. Certainly by 1930, my parents' generation is on there, 40 and 50, and now 50. There are a number of us who are on there. So that's bringing it up into a period where there are living people that you can identify and then take that information and use it in other kinds of records to look for even more current information. The SSDI, many of you have probably used that, the Social Security Death Index. We've talked about that in other meetings before. In the old days, I forget how long ago they did this, but some lawmakers in their infinite wisdom got a bee in their bonnet and thought that the SSDI was a hotbed of identity theft. And despite the protestations of many professional genealogists and, and genealogical societies, providing them with evidence that in fact, the SSDI was not a major source of identity theft. In their infinite wisdom, they put basically, I think about a 10-year blackout period on that. Prior to this, the SSDI was updated monthly. And in many cases, you could find recent tests as recent as two or three months earlier. Now, at the present time, the most recent information on the SSDI is the end of February of 2014. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows, but I believe they're waiting for that 10-year period to catch up and hopefully, hopefully in March of 2024, they may again begin to update monthly with more recent death information. We'll see. But it is still a valuable resource for, for finding more recent information on deaths and locations, things like that. Excuse me. Findagrade.com, I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. I find, find a grave to be one of the most valuable tools there is in, in our arsenal for finding living relatives. Also very useful for other aspects of genealogy, but for finding living relatives. And we're going to look at a case study today where it plays a very important part. Newspaper obituaries, of course, in more recent years can give you information on survivors. Very often the names of children are listed. And in the case of married children, their spouse's first name may be given, the city they live in, if it's different from where the deceased was, all kinds of good information that can bring you even closer to time and being able to track down some living cousins. Likewise, you know, in the last, I don't know how many years, but you know, many funeral homes have started to publish websites with memorial pages on there. So if you can do a search and come up with someone you're looking for on one of those pages, it can also be very, very helpful. Military records can be useful to some, to some extent. The paid sites ancestry.com, certainly my heritage, find my past. And along with the free site, familiesearch.com, all have valuable information on them. Social media, by social media, basically I mean Facebook. Many people are on Facebook. Some people don't like it or don't use it. But I have, in many instances, found help track down and find living cousins or living individuals when we're doing a search to try to find a DNA donor on a particular line. And so don't ignore Facebook. It's a tool. It may be an evil tool at times, but it's a tool. Likewise, there are many, many online phone directories. You can plug in what information you know. There's whitepages.com, Spokeo, PeopleFinder, there's, there's a number of them. And for the most part, you can do a search for free and you'll get up hit, a number of hits. If you can narrow it down and see somebody on there that you suspect is the person you're looking for, then usually then you hit a paywall and they want some extra money to get, you know, the good stuff, you know, the details of the the address or a phone number in some cases, or an email address if it's available. Also, Google, don't underestimate a search engine, just a plain old search engine search. And of course, there are some techniques available, you know, for maximizing your effective search on Google and other search engines. And other people on here in previous meetings have said that DuckDuckGo is a very good search engine that they like. There's certainly Bing and some others. And sort of like we recommend for autosomal DNA testing, we recommend testing with different companies because you're essentially fishing in different ponds of possible matches. Use more than one search engine. Put the same search into several of them because they all have different algorithms. And you may get very different results, at least, you know, among the, you know, the top 10 or 20 search results can vary widely from one search engine to the next. We've talked about Cindy's list before too, in terms of any kind of topic. And if you're not using it on a regular basis, you're really depriving yourself of a valuable resource. Here is the page under the category of finding living people. And you'll see there are a number of categories in there, all of which, if you click on them, will take you to a page of other resources about that topic. And you know, this topic is, has a number of things, but again, just about any topic you can think of is going to be there on Cindy's list. And between Cindy's list, I think, and the research wikis on family search, I think those two are two of your most go-to places when you're trying to just find out what's out there on a particular location or a topic or a subject. They've done a lot of the legwork for you and can direct you to things that could be valuable. So in the last presentation, which you have may not have seen yet, but you will, I gave a list of some resources for various countries in the British Isles, Scotland, England, Ireland, as well as New Zealand and Australia and South Africa. I realized I neglected our neighbor to the north. So to sort of make up for that, here's a little bit about Canada. Certainly there are earlier censuses. But in terms of our search technique, if we wanted to start with the most recent, then they've got the 1911, 21, and 31 census, which was just released on June 1st. And also there's a 1916 and a 1920 census of the prairie provinces out west. The site here, and again, this would be on the handout, so you don't need to scribble madly. The Library and Archives of Canada is a free site. All of the censuses are available on it, including the 1931. They're searchable. You'll get the transcription or abstract and you have access to the actual page images. So certainly some of these censuses are available on Ancestry and possibly Family Search and other paysites. But here's a free one-stop shopping for any kind of Canadian census. Also Military Records for Canada, foldthree.com, which is owned by Ancestry. It's a pay site. But they've got military records on you know, countries around the world. And I've used them for Canadian records a number of times. In terms of finding living people for the UK, here's a site, again, it'll be on the handout, how to, to a page on how to search for people for free in the UK. Sounds very appealing. In Australia, there is something called peoplesearch.com. I didn't find anything specific about New Zealand, but again, here's the research wiki for that country. And there may be something on there, or it could lead you to something where you could find a way to search for people in New Zealand. So now we're going to take a little case study. And just see what we can do to find some living relatives. If these were our cousins, they would be living cousins. In our DNA project, they're in group six. We have only one test, only one test. It's a gentleman from New Zealand. His female cousin, who is the researcher in the family, enlisted him to do a Y-DNA test some time ago. And she supplied all of the lineage information. She's also taken an autosomal test and has had a number of her cousins who descend from Benjamin Parks Senior do tests and she's entered them all into our Parks project. Now, at the 67 marker level, I will tell you that this gentleman only has one match in the entire database. It's at a genetic distance of four. And the person he matches does not have the Park surname. Now, sometimes that would lead us to think that this may not be a genetic Parks line, or they may have had an NPE somewhere along the way. It's far too early to assume that at this point because our, our DNA project database is heavily, heavily weighted towards North American participants, just since where it started DNA testing and was heavily advertised and it's been around for a long time. The representation from countries in the UK and Australia, New Zealand, other parts of the country is, is much slighter, but it's growing and it will only get better over time. So I'm not worried about the fact that he only has the one test, which is not terribly close. Perhaps if it were a genetic distance of zero or one, we'd want to upgrade he and his match to see if that holds up. But at this point, I think that we're still looking at a genetic Parks line. And you'll notice the earliest ancestor is, was born in the early 1780s in Smithwick in Staffordshire, England. He married Phoebe Martin, Benjamin Parks Jr., also born there, died in New Zealand. So he, it would appear is the immigrant ancestor for this line. Now here's a very bare-bones stripped-down family tree supplied again by that female cousin. And we see that basically what she supplied us is with is information only on the one son of Benjamin Parks Senior. Certainly there were probably other children and possibly other male lines. But the only one we have information on right now is Benjamin Parks Jr., born in Birmingham, died in New Zealand. And going down the way, just taking what information we can gather from this, we see that the first three children in that line were still born in, not stillborn, were born in Staffordshire, England in the 1830s. And then we see the fourth child was born in 1842 onboard the ship en route to New Zealand. So of course, that gives us a timeframe to look at. They obviously probably arrived in New Zealand 1842 or 1843. And the line continues on from there. We also see the location, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, in New Zealand, a town called Motuika. So with that little bit of information, first for context, I don't, I don't know if you're like me, but my sense of geography for England and Scotland and Ireland, while it's getting better, I don't always immediately recognize where in the country a certain city or shire is. So here, we just simply went to Google Maps to get some context. And there inside the red dotted line is Staffordshire. And it borders on the city of Birmingham, which is actually in another shire, but it goes right up to it. So that gives us a sense of where in England we are. Likewise, the Benjamin, well, not the Benjamin Parks, the the other line. Well, no, Benjamin, yeah, was born in Smithwick in the 1870s. So to find out where that was in Staffordshire, again, we see in this, in the red dotted lines, it's sort of now probably basically a suburb of Birmingham. So again, we can, we can see what size area that we're talking about and it gives us some physical context for where this is all happening. We're going to be looking at lines in New Zealand. We're also going to be looking at a line in Australia. So just again, for context, notice on the west of Australia, we've got Western Australia and Perth. And over on the east coast, we have New South Wales, which will play a part, encompasses Sydney. And then down to the lower right, we see New Zealand, which consists of basically two large islands. And zeroing in on that, and we look for the city of Motuika. If you can see it on there, it's just above that little icon for Route 60. And it's on the northern border of the southern island. So again, we have some sense of where these places are. Now I went back to Find a Grave and simply did a search for the surname Parks with the spelling P-A-R-K-E-S and Staffordshire, born, I think it was, I put in before 1840, just to see who was there. And out of the number of hits, my eyelid on this John Parks, born in 1825 in Staffordshire. And we can see he died in New South Wales, which is why I mentioned that. So the other line, the Benjamin Parks line, came from Staffordshire and went to New Zealand. Now, my question is, is this John Parks line that came to Australia related to the New Zealand line? That's what we're going to take a look at. Down below, it says, he was the husband of Eliza Parks, formerly Ellis. So that gives us his wife's name and maiden name. He died in Balmain, a location we'll see again. And his parents were named as Joseph and Mary, very biblical. But it does give us one generation earlier. And from his birth date in 1825, it tells us that his parents were probably born around 1800, but they certainly could have been born in the 1790s. Or depending on his birth order, even in the 1780s. So it's quite possible that Joseph, his father, could have been a brother, or at least of the same generation as Benjamin Parks Senior of the New Zealand line. So looking further down on his page, again, we see his wife, her memorial, and it tells us they were married in 1848. Over here are four children listed, three sons and a daughter that we can explore. You'll notice that the earliest child was listed and was born in 1855. So there's a a good gap there where there were probably other children born. For whatever reason, their memorials are not recorded here on, on this Facebook Find a Grave page. So we're going to take each of those sons in order and see if there are any possibilities for finding more recent generations. And we won't ignore Louisa either, as you'll see. So the first one, born in 1855 in West Bromwich, in West Midlands, England. Okay, that, again, with my poor sense of geography, I had to look that up. And of course, looking on the map, we see West Bromwich is just above and adjacent to Smithwick, which is where the earliest ancestors of the New Zealand line were born. So again, Staffordshire is, is not that small an area. If they were from someplace way up in the very northern part of the, of the shire, it might not lend as much weight to them being possibly related as the fact that they're in a fairly geographically small area. Looking back at this John Parks, very quickly, we look at his children that are listed, three daughters. So for now, we're going to put John aside because what we're basically looking for are male descendants. The next son, Aaron John Parks, 59 in Staffordshire. We see under his children listing, there are three sons listed that would be possibilities for researching. The next son is Peter Parks, again, born in West Bromwich, died in, in Western Australia. You'll notice the others were born, died in New South Wales, which was over on the east coast. I don't have it here, but we do know that apparently this line, when it came from England, landed first in Western Australia, in Perth. And it appears Peter Parks. And it appears Peter Parks, uh, and his line remained in Western Australia, while it seems like the rest of the, of the family moved to the east coast. Uh, again, looking at his children, there are two sons there. One of them died as an infant, so there's one son who lived until nineteen ninety, who we could research and try to bring forward into present day. Uh, the daughter, Louisa Parks Prawley, again, born in West Bromwich. Gives her date of birth and she also died in New South Wales. And uh, if we needed to, of course, learning information about female descendants can lead us uh, to the male descendants that we're looking for. Uh, we don't completely ignore them. So now I went back to England and decided to just get a sense of how many parks there were in Staffordshire about that early time. The earliest census is in eighteen forty one census. Uh, I simply did a broad search for that spelling of parks in Staffordshire. And you know, even though we're not Smith or Jones, you can see there were eleven hundred and fifty one individuals in Staffordshire in eighteen forty one. We know from our research here in the United States that within a state, within a county, very often there are more than one genetically distinct parks lineage. So it's unlikely that all eleven hundred and fifty one of those parks are related uh, to the same, to, to each other. So how do we begin uh, narrowing down? We narrow in by looking for Benjamin Parks, Benjamin Park Senior. This is the line that went to New Zealand. Uh, the family tree that was provided to us gave his birth date about seventeen eighty one or two. Uh, here's a Benjamin Parks. Uh, we see there were twenty four of them in the eighteen forty one census. Uh, born in seventeen ninety one. We also know from working for census, with censuses for a long time that uh, flex, uh, ages can be very flexible. Uh, but here he is in West Bromwich, and we know that's an area uh, that we know we should be looking at. And indeed, if we go to that uh, census listing, is this the Benjamin Parks? Uh, yes. Almost certainly. There, his wife presumably, uh, Phoebe Parks. We know he married Phoebe Morton. Uh, and there are a number of children listed there, including a number of sons. Uh, we only know about one, the one son Benjamin Junior, who by this time had married and was not living in the household. So again, if, if I were researching this line, if it were mine, I'd be wanting to follow all of those lines of, of those children in that eighteen forty one census as well. And of course, over to the side, you know, typical of, this is on ancestry. Uh, other records that you can look in that may or may not be pertinent to this individual. I couldn't find the John Parks, who was the uh, ancestor of the Australian line, immigrant ancestor. I couldn't find him in the eighteen forty one census with his parents, Joseph and Mary, for whatever reason. He would have been a teenager then. Uh, so I jumped ahead to the eighteen fifty one census, knowing that he was married by then. We know he married in eighteen forty eight. And here he is in West Bromwich. Eliza, Eliza Ellis and uh, two small children, a son Joseph two. Of course, we know his father's name was Joseph and a daughter, a one month old daughter, Sarah Parks. We look also at some of the other records. Here's the marriage record for John Parks and Eliza Ellis. And again, it confirms that his father was Joseph Parks. By this time, we know that this John Parks died in eighteen ninety five in New South Wales. Uh, so we took a look in the eighteen ninety one census, he should still be in there. And uh, we did a, just a search for the surname Parks. Uh, there were fifty four of them in New South Wales. Uh, looking down the, the list there, you'll see there's John Parks in Balmain, which we know is, is where he died. And we also noticed there are a number of other individuals there in the same area. And obviously, if I were researching this family, I'd want to know how or if those were related to John Parks. Uh, Henry Ebernezer, Aaron and, and an individual whose given name is not listed. So we go to that census to see what it can tell us. And unfortunately, uh, it's very uninformatif. Uh, it gives you the street and number and name, uh, his, his name. Uh, there were two males and two females in the household, no age breakdown, no other information. So it's probably our guy, but we really didn't gain uh, any valuable information other than placing him in New South Wales, uh, shortly before his death. Now, we're going to go back to uh, the son Aaron John Parks, who was the, the son of John and Eliza. And looking down on the list of his children, he has three, three sons there. Uh, I explored some of them a bit and we're going to focus on the next to last son, John Parks, born in nineteen hundred, died in nineteen seventy four. And here is his memorial page on, on Find a Grave. Now you'll notice that so far, I've just been using Find a Grave. Uh, I haven't had to go, yeah, we dipped into some census information, but I haven't had to go to records in Australia or New Zealand yet. I haven't had to look at newspaper obituaries, any of those other sources yet. And in some cases, i- it will be different. You might have to go to those sources much earlier. But here, it, uh, my rule of thumb is always go for the low hanging fruit. Uh, because your goal is to find somebody in the quickest and easiest way possible. Uh, if, if you're actually researching this line, yes, eventually you'd want to go to all those record sources and document them and fill out a, a family tree. But right now, our goal is to find a living male Parks from this line for DNA testing. So we look at John Jack Parks and we see he had a son, Arthur Aaron Frederick Parks. Uh, born in nineteen twenty five, died in ninety five. So now we're looking at somebody of my father's generation. Uh, so we're coming closer and closer into time. He listed no children on his Facebook page or his Find a Grave page, excuse me. Uh, but there are these two plaques for he and his wife. And we can gain some clues from there. Says in loving memory, Arthur A F Parks, uh, devoted dad and granddad. So we know they did in fact have children. Whether there are any male, male children, we don't know. Uh, we also look over on his, his wife's plaque. You can see she lived more than twenty five years later after him. And she is listed as a devoted mom, grandma and great grandma. So that tells us at least that there were children and grandchildren and great grandchildren alive in nine, in twenty twenty one. So we know there are possibilities here. So I took the information we had on this Arthur Aaron Frederick Parks. Uh, and you could do this on Family Tree, where there are public family trees listed. Uh, this happens to be on Ancestry and, and there are a number of other pay sites uh, you could search for. Uh, but this is Ancestry and plugging it in, he comes up in a family tree. We go to his page. This is indeed the guy we're looking at, correct parents, correct wife. And we see that there are three children listed. Two females and a male listed as private, which indicates that they are most likely living. Uh, so these are people who are probably about my generation. I should have, uh, I shouldn't have cropped that page so well. So we just went up to the top of that and you'll see the person who posted this tree is uh, most likely a Parks descendant. Exactly how she's related to Arthur Aaron isn't known, but if we look at her profile, we'll see that indeed she is from Perth in Western Australia, which makes sense. Uh, retired nurse in her eighties, uh, widow. Her family lines include Parks Ellis, so we know she is of this John Parks, Eliza Ellis line. Last active two to six days ago. Uh, so that tells us that she's a very serious researcher and she's coming to Ancestry fairly frequently. So our chances of messaging her and getting a response are, are, are very great. And uh, I haven't had a chance to do it because I just finished working on this presentation a day or so ago, but I will reach out to her. Because I want to put her in touch with the female researcher whose line is over in uh, New Zealand. Uh, because they're both active researchers, there's a good chance that their lines match. And I will try to get them in touch with each other and let them take the ball and run with it. But also, the other reason I want to, to reach Heather Drayton is to see if she has any male Parks cousins that she could recruit uh, for DNA testing. And in fact, a, a request coming from a cousin, possibly one that she grew up with and knows, is going to mean much, much more coming from her than it would be me out of the blue. Who am I? Uh, so we'll take a look at her family tree in this view. Uh, this is almost certainly her down at the bottom in the center. Uh, there's her husband who's deceased. We know she said she was a widow. He was born in forty two. If she's about the same age, yes, she would be in her eighties. And we see her mother is Irene H. Parks, uh, and the father of her grandfather is Peter Parks. And of course, we go back to him, there he is, one of the sons of John Parks and Eliza Ellis. Uh, so I think we found somebody who probably has first cousins or first cousins, cousins once removed. Uh, male Parks relatives who can most likely convince them to do a Y D N A test. Looking back at her line, I won't go all the way back through it, but she has actually done extensive research and has taken her direct Parks line all the way back to a John Perks, uh, born about fifteen twenty five in Worcestershire. I knew I was going to stumble over that, Worcestershire, England. And we just take a look because again, my geography is, is sloppy. But there it is, you know, it's just below uh, Staffordshire. Just, you know, right around circling around the city of Birmingham. So it, it's quite possible that that line, which has been there since the fifteen hundreds, uh, has remained in that area, moved a little bit north in, in the case of some of the lines. But we know that if we ever get, if, if this were our family, if we start researching in these areas, uh, in earlier, earlier records, we're probably going to find a lot of, of these descendants and there may well be some who are still living in this part of England today. Again, if we wanted to reinforce and have some DNA from one of those to add to the, uh, add to the project. Uh, now, I, I mentioned before, you know, we know from our own experience that within the same county, very often there are more than one genetically distinct uh, Parks family. Uh, I've experienced it in, in my own line. I know probably some of you have. So I went to our project and I remembered that we had at least one other uh, line in the project that had roots in Staffordshire. And it's in our DNA group forty two. You may have heard us discuss this uh, particular line before. Uh, there are two gentlemen, one lives in Australia, one lives in South Africa, both with a surname Pursh House. Uh, and getting in touch with them, they put us in uh, in touch with some literature that explained the origin of their surname was most likely uh, many, many years ago, uh, when surnames were beginning to be adopted. Uh, you would say of somebody, oh, it's John of Parks House. And eventually over time, the Parks House morphed into Pursh House. And indeed, going back here, you see this early line was actually according to her, our research, uh, identified as Perks. Uh, and so it may have been a part of a regional accent of how it was pronounced. And so if you go from Perks to Pierce, Pierce House, it's not such a, uh, you know, a stretch. You can see how uh, Parks could morph into something like Pursh House. Uh, and indeed, uh, we know they are a Parks line because they are genetically related to others in our in our project in this group, Lineage Key Q is the Lieutenant Richard Parks uh, line in New England very early on. For many years, he was thought to be the grandson of early immigrant Richard Parks, which is Lineage Key R, until DNA testing some years back disproved that. So it became its own line. Uh, and we don't, so consequently, we know nothing about who the parents or certainly the grandparents of Lieutenant Richard Parks are. But uh, knowing where this connecting line came from, it certainly would give those researchers a clue as to where to begin looking in England uh, for Lieutenant Richard Parks's ancestral home. Uh, there are two other fragment lines in there, N W and V P. Those are almost certainly, uh, not definitively, but most probably those are fragment lines that connect to the Lieutenant Richard Parks line. Uh, we just haven't found the connections yet. So there's at least one other uh, genetic Parks line that uh, came from that Staffordshire, England uh, area. Oh, and uh, oh, oh, yeah, we noticed the, the, the second test down there listed his ancestor, William Pursh House, as being from Tipton in Staffordshire, England. And again, just to get a sense of where that is, uh, there in the red line, you'll see it's it's sort of adjacent and northwest of the West Bromwich, which is above the Smithwick. Uh, it's close to those other lines, but we know the DNA is different. But it's, it's interesting to see where these lines are and that they've been identified genetically. So i- in conclusion, you know, I just, uh, this is only one case study and every time you go through this, uh, your methods are going to be slightly different depending on what kind of information is available and it leads you down a path. If, if we hadn't been able to go so quickly on face, on Find a Grave uh, and, and to a family tree on uh, family tree on, on uh, ancestry, then we would have continued to look at those li- other lines of other male parks on the Find a Graves and then begin to look in other sources and we may well have ended up looking for newspaper obituaries, uh, and things like that, marriage records. Uh, every case is going to be different. But at least hopefully this gives you an idea of how to get started. Get your bearings, get your context, you know, line up what you know, and then start bringing things forward in time. And as I said, you know, go for the low hanging fruit, you know, because in this case, you know, if your goal is simply to find a living cousin for DNA testing or to make contact with a, a branch of the family, uh, then go the easiest route possible. So also, uh, this, this sort of brings up a, a, an idea that I had, you know, the Park Society is sixty years old now, begun in, in nineteen sixty three. And it was originally for descendants of Robert Park, early immigrant to, to uh, New England. Uh, after a short time, it was opened up to all descendants of all parks, uh, with roots in the British Isle. Uh, membership is still restricted to people in the United States and Canada. Uh, it was, I think originally because of, of uh, concerns with postage and handling and communication. Uh, but even in today's age, uh, we realize that opening it up to a, a worldwide membership, uh, would be overwhelming because we're a small organization, small staff, limited resources and time. Uh, but I think there is a place at some point in the future uh, for an organization that would be a clearinghouse as the Park Society is, a clearinghouse uh, for information from Parks Lines all over the world. And certainly a starting point for that is the DNA Project, which is open to anyone, anywhere. Uh, and we're finding more and more that we're, we're having people test from other parts of the world. And uh, we're getting the ability to reach out and find uh, our cousins uh, back in the British Isles and sometimes in other countries. Uh, and uh, I became a member and some of you may be familiar with a group called Goons. Uh, it's a horrible acronym, but it stands for the Guild of One Name Societies. Uh, they're based in England and based in the UK and they are sort of a, a clearinghouse, if you will, uh, for all sorts of organizations dedicated to researching a surname or a one name study. Uh, and uh, some years ago I joined and registered the park surname, just sort of as a placeholder. No one had claimed it. I haven't done anything with it. Uh, and I don't know if I'll ever have time. But hopefully in the future, if uh, somebody possibly oversees uh, wants to pick up the uh, uh, the torch and run with it. Uh, I think it would certainly be possible to set up a, at least a website uh, where people could submit their information. We could certainly break it down uh, by DNA group if they have DNA representation. And under that DNA group, if somebody had online public trees for their lines in Australia or New Zealand or in the British Isles, and they wanted to post a link to it, that would be a very easy way. or in the British Isles, and they wanted to post a link to it, that would be ve- a very easy way uh, for people to find each other. So that's just a thought and that's something we could talk about down the road, but, uh, uh, discussion for another day unless you want to talk about it now. So, uh, I'm going to back out of this. Stop share, stop share. Help me, help me. Okay, we're back. Uh, so I, I'll turn it over, back over to Susan and, uh, hopefully and she'll probably open the floor to anybody. Uh, discussions about this or, or anything.
Sorry about that. No, I was just saying, I, I, this was great. This was wonderful. And you know, it, it, um, it actually, um, come, confirmed for me some of the steps that I was taking when I was doing my own research and just, you know, backtracking and going and looking at all the different sites. And I actually find, you know, uh, Find a Grave very helpful myself. So, um, I'm glad you do too. Um, so does anybody have any questions for Ken? Don't be shy.
There's a hand thing.
Oh, well, we're, we're, we're more informal than that. If you got a question, just shout it out.
Yeah, uh, Ken, have you, uh, solicited many people? Once you've driven down to the present day persons, have you actually solicited many people for their DNA?
Yes, the short answer is yes.
And what's your success rate?
And, and not just for my own genetic group, but for others within, in the DNA project. Uh, because, uh, there are many cases where, uh, it would be very useful uh, for that particular lineage to have, uh, someone test. And, uh, if people don't have the time or the expertise to do it, uh, and if I do have the time, yeah, I've done so. And, and we've been successful in a number of cases. Uh, again, uh, like I mentioned in this case, if we find somebody, if we can convince uh, a known relative to reach out to them, uh, it's always better coming from somebody who's, who's related than a, a total stranger, uh, cause that can be. And then again, w- we can do a whole topic on that of, of how to uh, communicate and reach out to people for testing. I just watched a, I just joined, if anybody else is familiar with, there, there's a a, a group called Family Legacy Tree Webinars. Uh, uh, I just signed up. Uh, they've got thousands of presentations on all sorts of subjects. And I just watched one yesterday about collaboration and cooperation or correspondence. Collaboration and correspondence about DNA, uh, just talking about how to find people and how to reach out to them. Uh, generally, you know, uh, you don't want to just pick up the phone, even if you have a phone number and call somebody out of the blue. Cold calling can be very off putting if you can. Uh, and, but they suggest lots of, even if you have an email, uh, subject lines that will draw people in and, and are more likely to get a response. But, uh, if you can offer them some information first, uh, to sort of establish a bit of legitimacy from yourself and, and as they pointed out, may reassure them that you're, you're not asking for money or you're not asking for a kidney, uh, then, uh, you're likely to hear from them. And, uh, and you know, if they're getting something in return, uh, an offer of, uh, information that they may not have, uh, you're more likely to get a response. Uh, so yeah.
And I, I think you're right when you say about getting maybe a family member that they know, because my dad's very skeptical of a lot of things. Um, but when I asked him if he would do it, you know, for me, I mean, he knows I'm in, he did it absolutely. I mean, but if somebody else had, I mean, people have asked him for different things, like, Dad. You know, I basically had to intercede and sort of say, this is okay, it's legitimate, it's fine. He's gonna shut him down immediately.
Well, just recently, Dan here was visiting on a, a trip through, through the area. And we talked about, uh, finding a, a close relative of his to add to the DNA project. And he
I was a little more direct.
He whipped out his phone and called his uncle and got his okay right there.
I just told him, hey, you're gonna get this packet in the mail, follow directions and do it before you go on your trip to Alaska. So in case you die.
So, but you know, there, it's somebody he knows and trusts and he's known all his life. It, I, I could have contacted him out of the blue, uh, explained who I was, even that we're related and all, and it's, it still might not have been as effective as simply, you know, hey, here, do the test, boom, thank you. Uh, so it always means more coming from a, a, a known relative, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. He would have done it because I think he recognized your name.
Yeah.
Recognized your name.
Speaking of recognized names, uh, Anne, you joined us. Great. Good to see you.
I'll be you, you were, you were saying something?
Yeah, I, I, I traced down through ancestry, I traced down to the, to, to living people. Uh, fifteen different people and I sent them a solicitation, an offer for a free DNA test, but I only got two people to even respond and th- they weren't interested, so.
Well, that's
For clues on how to increase my success rate.
That, that's not unusual and, you know, I, I've struck out many, many times. Uh, it, you know, it's, it's not guaranteed, uh, but if you don't ask, you're never gonna get an answer, so.
Well.
Uh, and but don't be discouraged, you know?
We have that, uh, reunion coming up the end of the month. Do you want me to see if uh, we can find any kind of male descendants that might be interested in submitting a sample?
Uh, certainly ask them if they're willing and get their contact and information and then we can discuss it to see whether, you know, it would be furthering our, our information goal. Uh, I did see something posted, I'm not sure if it was him on somewhere that he wasn't feeling well and the reunion might not happen. Have you heard anything about that?
No, last, there's a Facebook, uh, messenger, group messenger going on and yeah. Last I saw just a couple of days ago, yeah, they were
Yeah.
Still coordinating, trying to get a relative up from Louisiana and.
Well, good. A- and certainly through DNA testing, you know, y- you can find people, uh, that way obviously too. Uh, and, you know, you could do, uh, I, I'm not sure how far back your part uh, connection is in your line, uh, but if you have, you know, third or fourth cousins uh, who have tested and you have a match to them, uh, then you can get in touch with them that way and, and ask them if it's an autosomal test, if it's a male Parks, if they would be willing to do a wide DNA test. So, and, and that could be through Ancestry or Twenty-three and Me or FTDNA, any of those companies. Uh, but yeah, the DNA sites are a good way to find living relatives.
And to your point, Ken, I, I tested between all of my family members, we're on multiple sites and we took multiple tests. And I'm getting notices every day. It's almost too many.
Yeah. Nice, nice, nice problem to have.
I know, but I can't, you know, you can't keep up. It's like, I'll look at them later, but, um, but yeah, no, we, we did that. We did that on purpose because I was like, um, you don't know what you, you know, we wanted to make sure that we cast a wide enough net. So.
Yep.
Well, Ken, I appreciate your presentation, using the name Parks with the ES, which is my maiden name.
Yeah.
See that very often. It's always Parks KS. And my family was, uh, originated from the, uh, Midlands section, Wolverhampton, La Salle.
Yeah.
Area, so, uh, it was interesting, very interesting today.
Well, I think your spelling is more prominent in England than it is in, certainly in the US and, and, uh, in other parts of Ireland. They each have their areas, you know, where they're, they tend to be more popular. Uh, so.
That would be an interesting article is to find out when the ES, why the ES sort of, you know, cause didn't it all, didn't most start out with ES or no?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not an expert on that. Uh, you know, I, I think, you know, a lot of people say I've seen and I don't know how true it is, you know, it has a French origin, P-A-R-C. Uh, but who knows? And it might have simply been Park, uh, from somebody who worked in or near the, the King's Park. Uh, but they also were very often stuck an E on the end of words back then. And then how, how the S came about, well, simply probably just because you were starting to refer to a, a group of Parks families and it became plural. Uh, so, uh, yeah, the origins of s- surnames are fascinating. And of course, these lines were going back that we looked to, to the fifteen hundreds. Uh, it wasn't until really in the fifteen hundreds, I believe, that surnames were becoming very ubiquitous, had been adopted in the British Isles. Uh, some of it went back as early as I think maybe the eleven hundreds, but it was, it was not that common until we got to the fifteen hundreds. And you know, that's one of the aspects of, uh, uh, the SNP testing that we're doing. Uh, is that you will find, uh, you have distant, uh, matches with others that you know. If you go far enough back in time, you share a common male ancestry. But at some point way back there in the past, when surnames were being adopted, uh, one group took a Park, Parks name, others became Baxter or Robinson or Davison. Uh, uh, that's, that's just the way it worked. Uh, and, uh, you know, even though they were related, at some point, probably two brothers may have had, uh, different surnames. So.
Well, even, even in recent history, at least with the Van Allen name, um, they were using double Ls and one Ls within the same family. And, uh, you know, and, and sometimes the same men would do double Ls and one Ls.
Yeah.
Whatever kind of, they decided that day, but eventually they kind of chose. But we had to be, you know, in the family, there's one Ls and double Ls sibling, like.
Yeah, well, well, if Todd were here, he would certainly weigh in and, and that's, that is the reason in our given name index that we do not put, uh, the surnames in there. It's only the given names because they all have some variation of the surname, but even within the same lineage, you may have found different people or different generations in the line that spelled it differently. So we just sort of assume it's a variation of that and, and focus on the individual. Yeah. Yep. Anybody else or, or anything else you want to talk about while we're here today? I wore you out. Well, well. Susan, anytime you want to wrap things up, but, uh.
Well, I, I appreciate today, this was really, really great. And, um, I thank everybody for coming. It was good to see you and we'll just see everybody next month.
And, uh, as I said earlier, uh, last month's topic, I want to re-record and I will get that done this week uh, week and, and post that with the handout for that. And then we'll be posting this one with a handout for that a- as well. So we'll be, all be caught up and, uh, and, uh, there are certainly some ideas for topics for next month, although we could put some of those off for later. If, if anybody has topic ideas or if anybody wants to lead a presentation, it doesn't have to be super involved, just something that you want to talk about or have some expertise in or experience in. Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, good to see everybody. See you next time.
Bye.
Bye-bye.